...bring the meeting of the Moni Village Board for August 26th. If you will write in a bunch of words.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with their redeemed and justice for all.
Call, please.
Trustee, Raisin.
President.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
I'm told ghosted up here. Or?
Here.
And Bob?
Here.
We have an indication with Pastor Uperson, Trinity Church.
Once again, thank you for the privilege and the freedom we have to pray. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, tonight, once again, we obey the Scriptures and we pray for those in authority in the village of Moni. Paul the Apostle said to Timothy, "First thing I want you to do is to pray. Pray every way you know how, pray for everyone you know. Pray especially for rulers and their governments to rule well, so that we can be quietly about our business in living simple and humble contemplation." This is the way our Savior God wants us to live. We pray with a heavy burden tonight for those in harm's way, our first responders, for our police chief and deputies, fire chief and firemen, and for Will County Sheriff and deputies. We pray that the churches of Moni Village and township will have the same burden and passion for everyone as Paul the Apostle did for his fellow believers, that there will be a continued unity of the Holy Spirit to work together for good of all the people in this village and township. Tonight, we pray for America, as the prophet Hosea prayed and encouraged Israel in their time of serious decline. And he prayed this, "Let those who are wise and understand these things, let those with discernment listen carefully. The paths of the Lord are true and right, and righteous people live by walking in them. But in those paths, sinners stumble and fall." Oh God, where is America tonight? Help us to look to you in this financial crisis that is in our world today. May we truly depend on you, help this village of Moni counsel affect the change that is desperately needed to turn America from tragic loss. Help the Moni Village officials to wholeheartedly seek after you, rather than seek to be noticed by others for their achievements. We thank you, Jesus, for asking the Father to advance the Holy Spirit into this meeting room tonight, so that correct decisions will be made to encourage, strengthen, and uplift all the residents of this great community. You want to do great and mighty things that we know none of here in Moni. In Christ's holy name we pray. Amen. And amen.
At this point, we'll move on to open to the public. Agenda items only. Please, on your counts, three minutes, and come to the podium with your name and address, please. Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. I don't entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that one. Second.
Horn and Raisin. Call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Gray.
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Raisin?
Yes.
Anything on the press report, Minister?
No report.
Certainly. Nothing under the mayor's report, Minister?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First night will be a review and proposal for renewal for the WLS contract. It's already been, we're coming up on one year. It's hard to believe, but Tracy Jankovjak is here with us tonight from WLS and is here to give us the review.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. Thank you so much for having me. It is really hard to believe that a year has already passed. And what's the feedback so far? Have you guys heard the commercials on either of the stations? Good? Bad? Suggestions? Well, we did, you know, as you know, come up with the tagline, Village of Moni, Making Progress and Creating Opportunities, because that's exactly, you know, what you are doing. A progressive, small town, but with big opportunities. And, you know, every day, you seem to be pushing towards bigger and better things. I don't know, I know some good things have happened as far as some land, some buildings going under lease, which is wonderful. I would love to think that we took a little part in that, if not influence. We know that, you know, your message has reached over 1.4 million listeners on a very consistent basis over the course of the year on both 94.7 and 89 a.m. What's nice about the campaign is when I was here last year and going through all the elements of the program, it's really evolved and do something bigger and better than I even presented to you a year ago. As you know, you had your customized 60-second commercial. And we also tagged the Village of Moni into promos, branding the community discovery feature as we rolled it out, in which Moni actually ended up getting close to about 600 other mentions, not only just name mentions in the promos, but we also created an opportunity for our community partners to do a hot property or hot development, which is really nice, because again, this is just above and beyond what, you know, was promised in your campaign. So it adds to the frequency of your campaign. Really starting, especially, you know, towards the latter part of the year, focusing in on specific opportunities, as we discussed about a year ago. I know the Roald Kitchen building was a big, you know, property that you're looking to fill. I know you're looking for a grocery store still, and I think with a lot of movement of these companies and more businesses coming in, as well as potential new residents, that will come as well. For the second year, you know, what I really had in mind, just in my experience in working with other communities, the kind of shift of the creative, it would be really focusing in on testimonials. So the first commercial really was to put Moni on the map, who you are, where you, what you believe in, your location from the city, obviously, new business incentives. And now we really want to hone in and focus on real particular opportunities and have some direct response regarding these opportunities. What I would like to do with this, with the creative moving forward, again, is focus on testimonials. Testimonials from businesses that have been successful in Moni over the years. Testimonials from businesses that have moved in over the course of the past couple of years, where you can actually hear their story as to what made them decide to move to Moni and what their excellent experience in working with the administration has been. So moving forward, again, that 60 seconds of that spot is still going to be a little more, this is who we are, Moni, and now we'd like to, you know, say JTR Heating and Cooling. This is Jeff from JTR, and he goes into about a 25 to 30-second testimonial as to why he chose Moni, and again, the great experiences that he had. I did actually start working on those towards the latter part of the campaign to prepare for the second year. And what we'd have to do moving forward is for you guys to identify some businesses or possibly some of the investors that are coming in on some of the newer deals that you've closed, and allow that opportunity for really any of your businesses, whoever would be willing to come downtown to our studios, which is on State Street, you know, we treat them to lunch and pay their parking or whatnot, and to come in and do that for Moni. It's great for their business, because they get to, you know, mention them, but it also helps you as well. Obviously, they chose to grow in Moni for a reason, so we want to, you know, that kind of testimony really resonates with people, other business decision makers, other residents. If we wanted to focus on a residential commercial, we could do that as well. We'd invite a few of your longstanding residents to come and tell the story as to what makes this community so wonderful. So that's pretty much my goal for moving forward. Again, as this evolves, we will continue to do these hot properties and hot developments. So as different initiatives come up, we would, as far as added value goes, promote these hot developments heavily during the 9 to 6, 9 a.m., 8 a.m. to 6 p.m., you know, prime drive, drive time hours. And just kind of a quick summary, I know Ruben had given you guys like the big packets. I made a little condensed packet for you, that again, just reviews, you know, you really, especially the first year in, got a ton of website traffic. The promos, the added value promos that we went above and beyond what we promised was going to be in this program, actually brought you to almost 1,500 commercials over the course of the year. With that being said, the average unit cost per commercial was about $33.40 by adding in all that added value for you guys, which is great that we were able to do that. Like I said before, our programming, our management, our company is very behind this. This is something that's not going away. And just to give you a little idea of a ballpark, our average unit rate on FM is about $175 per commercial, and on the AM, it's a little bit more than that, just because it has specific programming and you're going to, the premium's a little higher when you narrow it into like a Rush Limbaugh show, or Steve Dowell, or whoever. So based on that $50,000 investment, you know, consistently reaching over 1.4 million listeners on a weekly basis, your average cost per commercial was about $33. As far as your website clicks go, AM, I mean, it looks like combined between AM and FM, you get close to 1,000 people click through into your website from our websites. So those are 1,000 pairs of fresh eyes. I may have like counted for about 15 or 20 of them, but...
And that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. We don't, we don't just sit there and click, 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 I promise you.
So separate eyes, you can tell which are the IP addresses that actually come to it?
Right. Unique visitors.
Yes.
Correct.
And then compared to some of the other community pages?
You guys were very high, because you and the Village of New Lennox was the first two that came on board, and that's why I think, well, and you still will continue to get a lot of these promos, because we're actually adding more into the inventory for our communities. But the fact that you guys were both on AM and FM, because if you remember, New Lennox was just focused on residential, so they went pretty heavy on just the FM, where you were on two weeks on WLS AM and two weeks on the FM. So your web numbers were about 25, 30% higher than what New Lennox's was, and they came on about a month and a half or two months before you did, so...
For the online?
That's for the online. Correct.
And how for AM and FM then? How do we step up against them? So how does impressions go?
Impressions...
Did they have the same exact schedule as we did? Did they have the same...
No, they just, they were only on air on the FM. They had some promos, like the community, or I'm sorry, the community discovery promos that just had a name mention, which we rotated between the communities as they came on board. The first ones that came on got more. But as far as their customized 60-second commercials, they were chartered at residential growth, and they experienced a couple of companies that came in off of their campaign even focusing on residential. And that was, you know, the whole idea behind designing this campaign is adding many touch points. It's not just, you know, it's a marketing, you know, multi-level marketing, multi-platform marketing program. It's not just radio, you know, commercials. So I think, you know, with this, the whole portal on both sites, and the heavy promos that we went and did and will continue to do to brand WLS Community Discovery, Discover the South and Southwest Suburbs, really has helped, unlike, you know, just having a spot out there, so...
And the other question I have, if they come back, if they renew their contract as well, is there any way that we can guarantee separation? I can't tell you how many mornings I heard our spot was right next to New Lennox.
Really?
One after the other. And that was in the morning, so it would have been between 6 and 9.
So that was on FM then? Because we, our traffic department, yeah, they do, they code everything, unless something sneaked in as far as what wasn't a scheduled commercial for them, but was one of those promos, community discovery promo, where they mentioned New Lennox and then maybe...
No, they were very specific.
Really?
They had, you know, we had our copy, they had their copy.
Yeah.
You could tell, but they were probably half a dozen times I heard us.
Really?
Right next to them.
Yeah, I wish I would have known that, because we do, I mean, our traffic department is really pretty, you know, we have tons of all going on, we have tons of finance, you know, obviously, communities, we have six active right now. You know, they're usually really on their game. So I apologize for that, and I'll do a little research into that, but I'll definitely bring that back to...
And I should have like written down days and times of things that had happened, but I didn't have access.
Right. The only, I mean, it could have happened, you know, we're not, no, we're obviously perfect all the time, but my thoughts are probably what may have happened is one of those promotional announcements came on, and then backed up to another competing, not comedian, competing, but, but I will definitely check into that. And then if there is, whatever we find and we pull, we'll absolutely credit some additional commercials for you. What my management has approved me to do in renewing your contract is holding the rates, only beefing it up even more. New Lennox decided to go another route with an added value element that we put into their program, and this will be huge for you. It is sponsoring each and every single weekend of the year. So 52 weeks, and I have a sample spot, a spec spot, I made for you what that could sound like, but it's every Saturday and Sunday, about five or six commercials run during the day, not late at evening. Insane, you know, this WLS 94.7 weekend is sponsored to you by the Village of Moni. The Village of Moni and the South Suburbs is making progress and creating opportunity, and, you know, they'll save, you know, from a residential, new business, you'll hear it in a second, but... So that and renewing is a thank you, you know, for being a great partner of ours. Again, we're holding the rates, we would like to give you that added value sponsorship that goes, so in addition to everything else you have going on, every single weekend, it's going to be Moni, 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 Moni. And we could get creative with that copy as well, as initiatives change and...
And I just thought of this, and Ruben, maybe, can we get wave files so we can put like the audio or the spots on our website on the economic development page?
Absolutely. Yeah, and I definitely suggest that. Any connection, again, I mean, obviously, WLS AM and FM are two very heritage stations. It lends credibility when you take advantage of those, you know, opportunities. You are partners with us, you know, so we would love for you to do that, not in promoting us, but again, just lending the credibility of the two stations. As far as, back to creative, again, real quick, with, I'm sorry, I just totally lost my train of thought here. So, okay, so just in a nutshell, let's go through real quick, what, moving forward, what your campaign would consist of from a creative standpoint. You continue to have your interactive community profile page, which is starting to, it's only generating more and more traffic as we go here. And as I said before, Jeff is our, my GM, is going to put a lot, add a lot more promos in supporting the South and Southwest suburbs and tagging the community, so that's only going to be bigger and better as well. You will have promos that are added value, that are promoting your hot developments. You can do one, two, three, rotate them evenly, you can just focus on one for a few months and switch it out if that available, that specific opportunity becomes unavailable or taken. You'll still have your 60-second commercials, in which we are looking to, again, is to feature some businesses, as businesses come in, to something that worked really well with Bedford Park is, as new businesses come in, instead of them doing a testimony, testimonial of, you know, being an existing business, why they chose to, you know, for, to come into Moni, it's a nice welcome, it's great for business retention as well, nice little plug again for them, this is who we are, this is what we do, this is why we chose Moni to come here, and we're really excited, and, you know, those work. They definitely work, so... From a direct response standpoint for trackability purpose, other than what I can just tell you has aired, the traffic that has come through your digital, you know, advertising, we definitely want to give a specific email. What some of the communities are doing now is, you know, economic development, for this, for more information on this particular initiative or property or development, email economicdevelopdev@moni.com. Because we're going to start going heavy with this, really heavy. And so, I mean, boom, you know, obviously, if they don't email you, they know Moni, they can Google, there's a lot of different places they can find you now that they couldn't necessarily as easily found you before you start this campaign. So... Any questions so far? No? Okay. Just the last page, again, I just took some, I think, as far as the testimonials go, it'd be great to have a nice, you know, someone retail, I mean, I'm sure you'll recognize some of these, you know, home improvement, the Victory Motorcycles, retail, commercial, even like large manufacturing companies that definitely worked with Bedford. You can get as specific as, you know, this many square feet, the doors, the, you know, all that stuff that you wouldn't think that would really, people care to hear, when it's falling on the right ears, it makes sense to them. So the most recent number that's in the bigger packet that I had Ruben, had given you, we're still leading the way, our two stations, reaching the most business decision makers and business owners by combining, you know, the AM and the FM together, which is, you know, which is huge, because essentially, you're getting two stations for even like less than the price of one, and they're two solid stations. So, then, real quick, I will, going to play...
While you're getting ready, do you have any questions for us to give that?
The only thing that I thought of actually driving up here is, I don't have last week's packet with me, and I don't remember what was in there. Did you have like a guaranteed number of impressions that this schedule is supposed to deliver us, and, or did we hit it?
As far as the digital goes...
And listeners, too?
Right. Well, listeners, we just know on, you know, a weekly basis, we get our numbers of where our listenership is, so on average, it's 1.4 million between the two stations on a weekly basis with that schedule, so...
So last year, did you tell us that we were going to hit 1.4 million and it hasn't changed, and we...
I think it was like 1.2 million maybe last year. It's fluctuated with, you know, we've had a lot of good changes, though, with both AM and FM. Some would say good, some say, you know, but it's good, because it's been great for our numbers, it's been great for our ratings. You know, ratings don't necessarily mean a whole ton to local direct clients that are advertising buyers and whatnot, but our numbers, our listenership is going up, participation with, interaction with our two stations has been huge, so we're only going, you know, consistently more in a positive direction. As far as web impressions, if we under-delivered the web impressions, it will, it will roll over, because, you know, we don't put like 100 different advertisers, advertisers on there, but it just depends on what our traffic is on our websites that month, if we can deliver, but from what I'm looking at them, I mean, you're pretty close, so... But whatever is not, if you are short 50,000 impressions, you know, we'll, we'll make that up to you. Absolutely. Real quick. Okay, so this is the, just a spec spot, but of the, that added value weekend sponsorship that we'd like to offer you, you know, should you decide to renew with us and move forward.
Weekends on 94.7, WLS are brought to you by the Village of Moni in the South Suburbs. When you're looking for a great TV to live or for a visit, Moni invites you to visit and discover the charm of the rural community. The Village of Moni, making progress and creating opportunities.
So that was weekend promo, and we can change that up, but it's a nice 30-second spot, and it's going to be consistently every single weekend for the next 52 weeks, so... And then you also have your own weekend commercials going through your customized campaign as well, so they hear this is great little, you know, weekends are brought to you on this big station by Moni, and then they'll hear your commercials. This is the commercial.
The Village of Moni is a vibrant South Suburb with big opportunity for new business. Located just 35 miles south of Chicago's Loop, Moni is making progress and creating opportunity each and every day. Near Farquhar of Moni and his economic development team are aggressive in offering business owners everything they need to grow in today's economy. Moni is providing sizable business incentives for small and mid-sized commercial and retail developments to medium to large industrial space. Moni is connected to a hardworking and deep workforce, and has ideal logistics and proximity to major litter states. Whether you're starting a new business or looking to expand or relocate, consider expanding south to the hidden gem of the South Suburbs, Moni. Move your business to Moni, and they will provide you with all the essentials and watch your business grow. Visit thevillageofmoni.org today for available business opportunities. The Village of Moni, making progress and creating opportunity.
So very heavily, like over 1,500 times, we were telling people who Moni is, where you're at, what you have to offer businesses. Now, we really want to get specific with your opportunities and specifically who to contact for more information about that, you know, particular opportunity, and really use those testimonials to, you know, encourage and get some, a good level of direct response, because that's what the whole point is, right? And one last one, just so you guys can get an idea of the additional added value, which we'll continue to do with the hot properties. This is a sample of one of the promos promoting the community discovery, Discover the South and Southwest Suburbs, and then it ties in a hot property, and this is Moni, is what it was.
The Village of Moni.
Sorry, that was your primary. There we go.
Check out the new WLS Community Discovery Feature tab at 94.7. WLS.com today, and discover the abundance of development opportunities with sizable incentives the South and Southwest communities have to offer. With two major Chicago expressways now connected at I-294 and I-57, Chicago's Southland is ready and poised to become a major player in the global economy. February's hot South suburban property is in Moni, located near I-57 and I-80, just 35 minutes south of downtown. Moni's hot property is a 700,000 to 200 square foot modern industrial building with over 14,000 square feet of office space, with 108 exterior docks, four drive-in doors, and 32 feet clear ceiling height. For more information on this property and more, visit 94.7 WLS.com and click on the WLS Community Discovery Feature tab. Discover South and Southwest suburbs and visit Moni's community page. The Village of Moni is making progress and creating opportunities. Brought to you by Perry Commercial, the South suburban real estate specialists.
Okay, so that was a hot property, that was one that we promoted. Now, like I said, do you have the ability to run several at once and rotate them evenly, or just focus on one for a few months and see what kind of traction that means, and then go from there? So, you know, we're, again, we're, really appreciate your business. You were the second community that came on board, and since four have followed you, I will definitely, Heidi, check into that separation. They're very, very professional, our traffic, you know, department, and things do slip, but that's not acceptable, that's not what we, you know, are looking to do, when communities flood the, you know, station. We have a ton of inventory where that doesn't have to happen, so I will check into that and fix it accordingly. As far as like the event support and all that, we are happy to, whether you renew or not, I hope that you do, we'd love to continue working with you guys. This is a really important time after one year of just being heavily on the air and banging away at it. The second year could really generate a lot, and it should, with everything in place to do that for you. The Fall Fest, we are bringing, we're coming out here, going to support the Fall Fest, we're going to promote it as another additional added value to you guys. Unfortunately, Dick Beyanti, it's his birthday that weekend, and so he can't make it out. I think if it was the weekend originally that you guys had had it last year, he would have been able to, so we have Danny Lake and our promotions team coming out, and we'll be doing some fun giveaways, bring the bags game, give, you know, some VIP concert tickets, a couple of the shows probably at, in Tenlake, so... Any other questions? Well, there's a lot.
Questions? Start.
I'm on the website right now, half the links aren't even working.
Links to us?
Yep. When you click the school link, it doesn't even bring you to the screen link website. Or worse, recognition just brings you right back to the website.
Should wait, sorry.
Real estate relocation, that actually brings you to something.
Move that.
I would not sustain a doctor tool.
Half the links on the website aren't even working for the Moni. Half the links on their website are even working for the Mo Me part of their website.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you tell me what links again aren't linking? And that could just be, uh. What did you say? It doesn't even go to your website? You know, this could be just.
If it were, it would just reload the page.
It was completely down about a week ago? All right. I've, I've played around in it, okay. Okay. Right, so that's what, it should link everything back into your website with the exception of the properties.
And then the mail property then obviously works.
Okay, okay. And I've played around with them a lot. Okay. Yeah, it is and it could just be that it's down, but I'll.
How long have they been down, like have you noticed?
I'm gonna find out. I will definitely find out for you. I can't imagine that it's been for that, I mean, these web numbers that I brought to you guys with all your clicks in have come strictly from an Ando report. So I will definitely check into that. And again, if for some reason those have not been working or they've been down for a significant amount of time unnoticed, I've played around, I'm pretty actively involved in clicking and changing things around. And I know that they at one time did work, so, but I will, I'm not a digital specialist by any means, but we have an awesome digital team and I will talk to them. And again, if in fact, they were down for a significant period of time, then we'll do everything in our power to make that, you know, good to you. We'll move you right to the top.
There's a question for Administrator Batista, this is.
Just a question, can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is budgeted, I don't recall, I don't have a budget in front of me.
Yes. The, the package that we had this previous year was 50,000. Thirty-three percent of that bill was taken from the three TIFs. So it came to 12,500 from TIF 2, TIF 3, and TIF 4. And that left a 12,500 which came out of the Economic Development Line item.
Okay, very good.
That being said, if we are focusing any months on residential, we can't use TIF money to pay for those months' schedules, right?
That's a percentage that's coming out of just the economic development script for the TIF months.
That's what I mean, if we have months that were on residential, we can't use TIF money for that, right?
That's correct. That's why the wording was specifically geared towards.
Commercial.
Commercial.
But that is where that, those weekend spots could help because you could just use that straight for residential too. Let's just add value, no charge to you. We can change up some cool messaging too with that. It is definitely all about the creative. Again, that first year was really putting you on the map. You know, some people did already know of you, but a lot of people didn't and now they do. It's only going to continue, you know.
But to follow up on your question, Trustee Horden. So the line item for, in this budgeted year is now for advertising. There's a $15,000 line item for advertising, which was.
And then the balance from the, split between the TIFs, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And this is my question, Batista.
I have a question. Have you received any phone calls or email in the past year saying that they've heard or gotten it from WLS?
That is a great question. That is a great question and the answer is yes, yes we have. In the past year, there is a company out of the Chicagoland area that has purchased three of the warehouses. And in one of our discussions with one of the representatives, first thing he had mentioned, he had heard our commercials. Was that part of it? I don't know, that's, that's kind of one of those intangibles. But he did mention that he did hear it and this company has purchased three of the warehouses. We did get a call that a steel company that acquired us a property and are linking with a developer, looking at the infrastructure to see if they can purchase that property and put a, a structure on place. But that, the first thing they mentioned was they heard the commercial and they heard about the incentives and they wanted to know about the TIF. And so we were able to give them some guidance. So to answer your question, yes. How effective is it? Then I really can't answer and I think even Tracy will tell you, you've got to be out there.
Any website hits or just all forms?
Yes, there's been, I think she said earlier.
Right, yeah, it's, it's in, and you can manage that from your side as well. Look at, you know, just compare September of 2014 to 15 and do that month to month. And I mean, we can show you on our end how we've taken you there.
Well, it's right here, it's my same, we've only gotten 1,000 hits for the past year.
Through, and that's, but keep in mind, this is only click-throughs from your banner ads. How many people have heard you and they go to us instead of searching for you by category, they're searching for you by name. So they're going to Google searches, so how they got to you, this is the only thing that we can say, this obviously solely came from us, right? But again, there's, if I hear something, I mean, you know, that's how consumers are now. You hear, you think, you'll remember the name and instead of going and, you know, saying bars, you go and specifically look for, what's the name of a Chicago bar? I can't even think right now, but you know what I'm saying? I guess I don't, I don't go out anymore. But, um, yes, I mean, it's, again, it's, this is the only thing that we can say that we did as far as coming through from your, from our websites. You know, the radio station websites, they're both high volume. The AM is about, you know, quadruple if not five times as more than the FM. That's going to change a lot with our change in lineups and our personalities and how interactive our radio personalities. Rumor has it Dick Behandi is going to potentially host his own weekend show so he can actually, people can still hear him because he goes on at 11 o'clock at night. And the guy still has a lot of following, but we're, we're sprucing up on the FM, the personalities. Obviously, the AM, you know, just the nature of the station, it's, it's news talk. So people are, you know, they listen loyally every single day, every single day. And they're involved, you know, they go to the websites. We always, our personalities, you know, if you miss this, you know, we're pushing you into our website. High volume, just another touch point of your campaign, you're hardly even, hardly any of the investments that you're actually paying for is actually the digital, you know, portion of, of the campaign, so. It's just a nice extra touch point. And then the event support, of course, will continue. One thing that's different, I'll point out and, although you guys have a lot of stuff to get to, but, um, is when we first met, the streaming was duplicated on the FM, but not, not the AM. Now both stations are simulcast, so literally everything you hear in your car or on traditional radio is also a whole different set of ears of the at-work listening audience. So that's huge. So now that's even another, you know. So you have 1,500 commercials, well, that's actually not exactly 3,000 because they happened midway through your campaign and we changed that, but. It's only going to get better, guys, and you really, we appreciate your business. Really enjoyed the partnership and we're really ready to amp this up and again, focusing on some specific opportunities and get some movement out here.
I, I have one question.
Yes.
I know in years past, I don't, I don't know if this is still acceptable or not, but after a certain hour, AM pumped up the watts and was able to reach out to a wider coverage area.
Right. Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, people, again, what we tell you what we're reaching is just what we can, you know, is just the general Chicago market about the AM station. I mean, it gets picked up in Buffalo, New York, you know, Florida, in very rural areas on the AM frequency. So that really helps, you know, as well. One more thing I forgot to mention and this will also be a huge thing for the AM next year is we were awarded a six-year contract with the broadcast partners for the Chicago White Sox. So that's coming away from CBS and WBPM and the games will all be aired on AM, which is, is huge. It's huge, so. Same type of, you know, you're renewing in this program, we're not, your commercials are going to air in some of those games without paying a premium price if you were just to come to us and wanted to do a White Sox, you know, campaign.
Do the Bulls do?
The Bulls, that won't start until the following year, but you're correct, yeah. Six years with the Bulls as well, so. Yeah. So good things, it's only getting better. Bigger and better.
Well, I think because of Trustee Razik's concerns about the technical glitches that are there, I would, I would simply ask that we table this until we verify and get that corrected.
Okay.
If, if that's okay with the rest of the board, do we simply postpone the vote on this until the next meeting?
Yeah, but there was no reaction request for it.
No, it was a discussion approval. But at this point, I would simply ask that we.
Sure.
Table that and then you can report back to our administrator and let him know.
I most certainly will on both issues of that not linking for some reason and then the separation too. And I'll come back with you with what, how we can make that good to you.
That'd be good.
Okay.
I have a question. The cost of this, this mention came out of the past year. Is this going to happen again this year?
Yes, sir.
Do we do the same thing, there's no limit?
Yes, the.
What we would, what I would recommend though is, as Ambassador Batista indicated, I believe there's $15,000 allocated towards the, from the budget. The commercial might reflect, just indicating that the Village of Mo Me does have three different TIF districts that we specifically identify in the commercial. It might help us and also justify spending from the TIF district very good.
And then the residential part would then be out of the.
Correct.
And, and or if they're giving, doing some add-ons that aren't costing us.
Right.
That's where we can address the non-TIF district.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll get creative with it, we'll, we'll do what we can do to help you get around.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We did bring this up last year. You actually started two weeks, you gave us two weeks of free advertising for Fall Fest.
Yep.
I didn't mention it to the board.
And same thing. That's okay, yeah, and that was another, I don't even know that I actually put that, thank you for pointing that out, but. Yes, and we, again, like I said, whether you choose to move forward or not, we're still going to be a part of your Fall Fest and be happy to, another two weeks of advertising.
I'm hearing you have one week of advertising.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm hearing a source of one week of advertising for Fall Fest.
Oh, that.
It says here that you're getting about tickets to a conference for Fall Fest.
I'm sorry, where, what are you, is that the, the big packet?
Yeah, no charge.
Okay. I was waiting on some creative that I did, Ruben did send me, so I've put through the commercials to be produced and once they're back and approved, we can start promoting that as soon as Thursday, so.
We'll be here two weeks.
At least, at least a week, I mean, depending if you guys improve on everything, the digital and the, the, I don't see that you wouldn't, would not like it, but.
I think it'd be kind of silly to advertise Fall Fest two weeks before Fall Fest.
Yeah.
Well.
It can't hurt, but, yeah.
So, once we're through with it, you're going to wind it up.
Yes, we'll start the banner ads on both sites, absolutely. Linking to, back into your site or your Facebook or wherever. You know, I guess that, you know what, just to be clear to you that, and then I'll let you guys know. Moving forward, you know, especially to hold us, you know, our accountability standpoint, you know, we want to spruce up your page, obviously, and those links aren't working and I will get to the bottom of that, but we want to, you know, spruce it up, we want like, who, I, I need to know like who I'm going to work with directly that's going to suggest making those changes to that site. Whether it's a business highlight, every month you do feature a different business on there, is it your chamber? You know, so just some things for you guys to think about as well. And, and the contact people might vary from the hot properties one to the next, but, you know, it'd be good to kind of start working on that as well until we even, you know, get a vote of who my main contacts were. So my, if someone says, one of the trustees was on and noticed that one of the links were broken, he can get like real-time answer and reach right out to, you know, the head of our digital department, you know, so. Again, the whole direct response is going to be really huge for the second year, so it's just going to leave all of our ducks in a row and, you know, we're clear on who is kind of in charge of what and we can see the progress and know that, you know, things are moving in the right direction.
Are we looking for the sponsorship or no?
We, we, one of the things that I believe.
There's two on here, that's why.
Yeah, I, I don't know specifically about that, but we.
I put a couple extra, you know, things if you were wanting to amp it up a little bit more. We're doing that for you naturally anyways, but from the economic development standpoint, it's a really good program, you know, to be a part of, so I just wanted to add a couple, you know. Again, we're not raising your rate, we're only adding more too. But a couple other opportunities in case, you know, it's something you have to decide on right now, maybe when the time comes with Win White Sox, if you guys want to, above and beyond, have a special feature in all the broadcasts or whatnot, you know, that's something we can discuss down the road too.
I think one of the things that we had discussed was that I personally may or may not like certain.
Right.
Personalities they have on there.
Steve Dahl.
But, you know, it depends on what we're trying to go towards as far as the, the market that we're looking for. You're going to be cognizant of what we're trying to do and not, I think, I think you and a kid WBPM had a kind of a邻近 towns that was doing something because.
Oh, yeah.
They were trying, give an example of what that was.
Um, so.
I don't have an answer.
Right, 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 right. You guys know I have a history with BBM, great, wonderful station. You know, but you just really never know what, every county executive is different, has their own style of doing things and so happens that, you know, maybe this one didn't care as much, you know, to really pay attention to what was going on, which is a shame because that's a premium price you're paying on that station because it's more of a national advertiser type station. Their amount of inventory they have for local direct clients is very small. That's why they can charge a huge premium, you know, to advertise with them. But they took a, one of my communities, not naming any names, was approached by them and to go into Cubs and White Sox Radio. And instead of them doing their homework and their work and the team that they have to utilize, the creative team, they took my 60-second commercial that I wrote, you know, with my production team and as a min-site for my boyfriend and whatnot. They took my 60-second commercial and condensed it into a 30-second commercial and aired all throughout White Sox and Cubs and verbatim was a 60-second squished into a 30-second. And it, I mean, totally did them a disservice for that. It was like one of the disclaimers on like a pharmaceutical, you know, commercial, so fast. And they put, and they, yeah, and that was a residentially focused campaign and they're running it in White Sox Radio. So that just, you know, female listenership of White Sox Radio is maybe less than 10%. And so as, on the residential focused campaign, you're targeted, targeting families and females, you know, specifically. So they took a commercial that was not only mine, but targeted towards residential and females and ran it almost the whole season before we caught it. And let my, you know, community know what was going on and they're not happy to say the least, so. And that's not bashing, you know, it's, you never know who you're going to get and their experience and not, you know, it's obviously, I'm quite aware that as these communities come on board, you guys are probably getting hounded by other radio stations and television and this, that and the other and, you know, I just, I, I want, another service I want to give to you guys is use me as a resource, you know, have me, I have access to Arbitron ratings, television ratings. You know, let me pull research for you should you decide to expand your campaign and to do other things, you know. I encourage it at some point, you don't want to spread yourself too thin, you know, for a couple of years, but.
So I guess the point was is that with, with whatever the target message is, they're going to try to make sure that.
Absolutely.
The appropriate messages in the right audience of that, of, you know, the proper venue for that.
Right, like we discussed when we last met, you were asking about Steve Dahl, like I don't really see a lot of, you know, because you don't necessarily care for him, but we pulled numbers as far as, you know, business decision makers, business owners, and he was one of the highest on the scale of listenership in that, in that category, so. Yeah. But, you know, if there are shows you want to avoid, we can do that as well. But we're always going to keep fresh ideas in front of you and, you know, monitor that you're, making sure your message is aligned with the right programming of the station.
I don't think it's made of personal preference as much as it is. I don't think it's made of personal preference as much as it is what has the right market draw for our messages, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, so.
Absolutely.
All right, at this point, I think we, do we have any more questions for?
I am on your concerns and I will, um, get this over to Ruben and Mary Ficar immediately, unless you guys would like me to copy all the trustees, I can do that as well.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Next up.
Okay, next, recently, Moni squad car twelve eighty-three sustained complete loss due to an electrical fire. Misero Financial is the underwriter and in order to complete the, uh, the claim, um, the vehicle title would have to transfer to them. Salvation. It's the village policy concerning surplus property that we're going to approve this measure and to move forward with the process. So we would respectfully request the board's approval to surplus, uh, two thousand and seven Ford Chrono Victoria. Uh, we would ask for a motion approval to authorize surplus as presented.
And is this just your, your state, this, uh, PUCO in the board meeting who found out that they caught a fire and it was, at this point, total?
Yes.
How would make that motion?
One second.
Uh, from Razik. Now, I'll only clarify if I can. Or is this a resolution or is it a?
Is it for personal surplus property?
Yeah, resolution is adequate.
I've always done, or this, but as long as it's in the, uh, record that it's surplus property and there's no further use for it, we should be sufficient.
Okay, so. Resolution.
That's fine.
Okay, so we have a resolution.
Twenty fifteen, shake.
Okay, thank you.
Local.
Trustee Gray, yes. Horn, yes.
Yes.
Razik, yes. And Gonzalez?
Yes.
And went so quick, uh, I just wanted to mention a discussion that, uh, to my knowledge, DJ can correct me if I'm wrong. They had a trickle charge in which is normal procedure. And they believe from investigation that that's what caused the fire, because something happened with it electronically or something. Is that about right, David? Close enough?
Electric fire, that's what we're going to call it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the last board meeting, we talked about, uh, the village going through a smoke testing, um, process. And we discussed that, but I want to ask Superintendent Crisell if you can just give an update and also trustee Gray. I know we have been communicating with each other and, uh, goodbye.
Good evening. I hope everybody's good tonight. Uh, yes, as Ruben had, uh, touched on, the board generously approved us to be able to do some infrastructure, uh, testing on the smoke testing based on the flu monitoring results. And, uh, we started this week with that testing. We posted on the village website and on Facebook some status and concerns that they could be looking for, what it is, easy links to find as far as the village website and the news. We keep the twenty fifteen INI smoke testing pinned to the top along with more news of what INI is, some of the possible contribution, contributors to INI. And I have a few pictures, uh, based on that in the smoke testing area, if anybody would like to see it either now or later. And I can hand out a few of these, what a standard smoke testing result looks like, what you want to see as a positive. As you know, residents, businesses have vent stacks that come out of the roof to vent, uh, the sanitary as your pipes flush and your sink flushes, to let those operate smoothly and, and flow. So during the smoke testing this week, we've had some smoke, uh, results that were positive and some that were right what we were looking for as I kind of have stated before, I'm going to hand these out real quick so you can see.
So positive, you wanted to come out of the roof?
Positive is roof, yes. So, uh, as the smoke testing was happening, uh, it looked like everybody had wood burning fireplace going in their house. And, uh, the positive smoke results were, were seen throughout for good systems. And that kind of reflected in the website, showed what it should look like. And, uh, we found numerous issues, numerous problems. Most, knock on wood, so far have been corrections that we will advise the residents to make. A lot of them have been very, uh, great to work with. Oh, we'll get that corrected right away. We didn't know what it was. And, uh, and some of them, uh, will have yet to be notified. So, uh, some of the results based on that have been positive thus far in trying to reduce the INI. This is some of the, what you don't want to see, and I'm going to pass these around real quick.
Any questions, your notes?
Yeah, so, uh, based on those results, you can kind of see where, as the smoke came out of the ground, that was an open sanitary drain, a clean-out for the, for the house's sanitary service that didn't have a cap on it. Actually, when we investigated it further, it had a cap on it, but it was allowing storm water to drain into it. So, uh, based on those results, we asked the resident if he could please remove the drain. It's not a drain into the storm system, it's a drain into the sanitary system. And, uh, please remove it and get it taken care of, which they, uh, agreed to happily, as I would refer.
DJ, in a situation like that, wouldn't it almost be orders coming from that?
Uh, there could be times where you would have orders, uh, you know, coming out of that since it is a vent, a direct vent to the sanitary system. So yes, it could definitely, uh, whether it's, you know, odors or animals falling in, whatever the case may be, yes, you definitely could have orders, so, yes, sir.
So people who are out of compliance, how much time are we going to allow people to correct that?
You know, we're still gathering data because this just started. A lot of the people that had noticed the smoke coming right out, uh, agreed, I'll get it done right away. Once we get the data back together, we'll probably go back, analyze all this data and then do a follow-up just to see if they did, uh, get into compliance. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people that need to be notified. We will do that happily, just to let them know that what we found and what they need to do. We actually had a few cases in working with, uh, the Fire Protection District, uh, in Eastcom to make sure that, uh, people didn't think houses were on fire calling nine-one-one. We found a couple incidents where residents had toilets where the wax ring and the seal meets, uh, at the base of the tile, smoke popping out of there. They said they always smelled sanitary in the house, they just never knew where. Our smoke testing made the smoke pop out and, uh, we were able to, I, I took a, a video of it. We were able to show them, hey, look, uh, simple fix, here you go. Another case, uh, one of the house's basement, uh, they had a, uh, kind of a lift, uh, you know, some pump in there for a grinder-mulcher pump for a bathroom that was down in the basement, and the lid was not bolted down correctly. It filled the basement up with this non-toxic white degrade kind of smoke. And, uh, they didn't realize that that was supposed to be bolted down and sealed to keep the sanitary going. So a lot of people were very grateful, oh, thanks, I didn't even realize that that was supposed to be done, or thanks, you found my, my toilet smell in my bathroom. It's been like this forever, you know, I don't know, you know, I didn't know where it was coming from always, uh, so, you know, a- and this is the first week. So, positive results already, which hope to realize the village in saving dollars. Uh, the program is working, I'm, I'm excited. Uh, we do have a map on the smoke testing area. I was approached today by a resident who lived out in the Gulfista Estates concerned that they had not getting, not gotten a notice. They lived on Colonial. They weren't part of the smoke testing. When I showed them the map and the atlas of the actual ring of to where they are actually at, their address wasn't in there, they didn't get the hand-delivered notice and, uh, and everything was fine, so they kind of realized that, uh, this, this map, uh, we're not fly-by-night trying to figure out where we're doing it. These were based on the results on the highest, uh, INI factors when we did the flu monitoring back in the day. So, very positive, very good outlook. Uh, I can see it already saving us money, uh, doing what the program is supposed to be doing. Quite excited. We'll get this data put on our GIS and then we'll be able to, uh, react on it and make sure that everybody gets it taken care of, so.
Is it normal to see it also coming out of the manhole covers?
Yes, uh, and that, uh, good question, that has actually shown us that, uh, we may need to get into our own infrastructure and seal some of those manhole lids. A lot of the lids, uh, in the machine that they use, they pry these lids off and they put a, a machine down to, uh, generate the smoke into the system to push it into it. Has, when they stomp them back down, they don't get them sealed all the way. So if they were just there, maybe the lid's not down, uh, it just takes a little bit of a seal. But based on those, uh, results, if we see lids smoking through there, uh, they'll need to be pulled, lids cleaned and, uh, and resealed down. So it's all part of that, that process, and you don't want those lids leaking if at all possible, then, then when you have the rains, they get in there. And that's effectively what we're trying to do with this testing, to find those areas where storm water could be entering in. Very successful, it's going great and, uh, and, uh, looking forward to giving and updating more results as the time goes on. Hopefully we'll have this completed weather-dependent by, uh, September eleventh, I believe is the target date. Uh, all the residents, uh, did get the notices, whether they were yellow or white, delivered to them residents, so it's working pretty good. Okay?
The only problem I have is the, the tie.
Yeah. We all check to your tie, DJ.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Trustee group report, Paul works.
Uh, just one quick thing this evening, as far as the roads go, as I spoke last time, they're pretty much done for the season. Uh, if you do live on a corner and there is still landfill to be put in, it will be put in, um, kind of added schedule as a smoke test in the first week or second week of September, they'll put dirt and seed. Uh, they will not put sad because once again, it will not grow, so. Just be patient with them. They are working diligently to get everything done. Thank you.
Can I just, just really quick, um, what happened on Will Center tonight?
There's a pipeline company, they're doing some work on that, I noticed.
I believe it's Night Court Gas, um, Dixon.
And just one other thing, speaking of Will Center, um, I actually got a phone call from my wife the other day and I talked to DJ about this. They were doing, uh, the stop-braking, painting, and it was not the actual village doing it. It just was bad timing when everybody was going to school at Will Center and Court. It was basically one lane trying to get in. So I don't know if there was social media about it, but it was not our village workers doing it. It was airbrush paving, taking care of what they're, needed to be done, so. Call us by names, please say sorry. Thank you.
Parks and Rec?
Just a, a couple things too, and I think the first thing, I just wanted to thank everybody who attended the last movie in the park last Friday. And so, um, we just wanted to, again, thank everybody. We probably had throughout the summer nearly a thousand, you know, accumulated, uh, audiences. So again, to talk to DJ during the next year, if you have any ideas for next year. And, um, just to let everybody know, Mary Jo attended the Moni Elementary Open House and it had a Parks and Rec booth about all the programs that we're doing in the village now, and I have now kids actually even signing up for more of the program. So as we're getting the word out that we actually have these great programs right here in this town, um, there are people signing up, so it's great. Uh, and, and how many weeks to Fall Fest?
Two.
Two and a half or so. Um, so again, this is the time of the year that we're looking for volunteers. There are several hours and slots available. You can call Mary Jo here at the village hall during, um, office hours, so you can sign up for your slot. So we probably have, um, about twenty-four different time slots to choose from throughout the weekend, if you could please do that. And I think that's about it, but just as an aside too, I just wanted to thank everybody. I put a sign here, um, for our, the Village of Moni participation in the Relay for Life, uh, this past July at, uh, Pietro Junior High. For our first ever, we had a Village of Moni team, and I'm very proud to say we were the noisiest bunch there. Um, I think everybody had a fabulous time. There was tons of kids there, um, and for a lot of, and most of our team members who had never attended a Relay for Life before, um, just a positive, huge community experience in the fight against cancer. So again, this was our fledgling year and we were already a bronze team, so I thank everybody for their participation there. And the Moni Women's Club has adopted, um, the American Cancer Society as their cause for this year too, because of Relay for Life. So thank you to everybody. End of report.
Thank you. Finance with trustee Horn.
Yeah, we had an audit conducted on the, our body teachers union, uh, for their, uh, their benefit funds by a third-party accounting firm, and there's no problems with that. There's copies of that that are available. Made available on request if you're interested in that. Village is having their own audit report. Fieldwork has been completed for that and will be issued in the next couple of weeks. Let me talk a little bit about, uh, funding from the state. Not surprisingly, we have now received our funds, uh, from the state. Particularly, uh, thinking of the motor fuel tax, they're not dispersing those funds, however, they are still collecting those funds. So, uh, which you should know is nineteen cents per gallon on gasoline and twenty-one cents per gallon on diesel fuel sold in the state. So there's a lot of, uh, income being brought in from that. We have also now received our video gaming revenue. That has not been an issue for us as, as so far as, I think we'll get it eventually, of course, but we have other, uh, revenue streams and we're able to continue our work in our, within budget, uh, because we have other revenue resources. And also just remember, vehicle stickers and pet tags are available for purchase. Prices will double September one, okay? So, end of report.
Thank you. Bill, uh, I'm sorry, business development, trustee Olson, I will make it tonight for work-related. Um, Kevin, did you hear anything on his behalf?
Not tonight.
Thank you. Building services and co-employment, trustee Pop.
Well, I'm happy to say that the, uh, project at, uh, Derby Meadows has been, uh, approved by the building inspector. So they're going to proceed with their, their work on their four units. And, uh, it's, there's too, too many numerous things to tell you on small projects, driveways and all the rest of it, but the building department is busy. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Home and safety and police?
Couple things. EMA members took their oath of office on August twentieth. EMA is coordinating, coordinating next week with Eastcom to be added to the communication network. EMA purchased fourteen radios for the EMA and CERT members. September eleventh will be the first, will be EMA's first activation during Fall Fest. Um, we have upcoming search and rescue training with COM, Crease EMA, sometime in September. Give an exact date on that? September twenty-ninth. And EMA will be hosting an upcoming four-hour driver safety course for all EMA members in October and, uh, they'll be at Taurus Falls. And I got nothing from the police, so end of report.
Thank you. If I could, just real quickly go back to something you said about safety, maybe think about, um, Urge of. The concussion workshop that we're going to be doing, what, is that still on? What's the date on that?
I'm not sure exactly. It's in October.
Make sure you get it to, get it to trustee Gonzalez and make sure
It's a concussion workshop? I'll give a show workshop for
Parents.
Play football and parents, um,
Concussion wear and stuff.
It'll be in October, the beginning. I want to say October first, but I'm going to ask.
Uh, there's, there's been a rise of, of, uh, concern, uh, rightness of, uh, about safety when it comes to sports. And, uh, and I know, like, all of our Mavericks, Bulldogs over at Creed, most of the teams, they implemented a USA heads-up program, training. Um, I had to go through the training myself, um, and it's very insightful, uh, stuff you you almost think you take for granted, then you realize it's like there's some things that we just, you gotta be reminded. And I, I, there's a few times where I thought that some of that information was going to do for baseball too. You wouldn't think of the pet injuries per se in baseball, but, um, can happen, and just to know the You wouldn't think of head injuries per se in baseball, but can happen. And just to know the signs. And so for parents and all that, I think Mary Jo taking leadership of having a workshop for the parents and the community is some really good stuff there, so. In case you guys were wondering where Daryl's at occasionally, he's always been here for all of our meetings. Sometimes still working in his office, but he is, he heard that there was a need for coaches on the Maverick Football Program. And so he has volunteered this time to be one of the coaches there, even though he doesn't have a kid in the program. So hats off to him for stepping up and doing that. He'll be here whenever we need him, but you know, otherwise, so he'll try to be here every other meeting or something like that. It's just. Next on the agenda, Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items for the board's consideration. The first item is the approval of a resolution regarding construction on state highways. Basically, this is a yearly resolution. It needs to be adapted by ourselves and any other village who does work on state highways. It indicates that we will comply with state guidelines with respect to construction and hold the state of Illinois harmless. But this would need to be passed in order to do any work on state highways within the Village of Moni.
What if we don't wanna work on state highways? I'm just kidding.
I'll make that motion so we can move along.
For a second.
I'm still distracted by the Packers. Hard to think about anything else.
Resolution?
Yeah, please. That's popular, a resolution number?
Twenty fifteen to shake.
Recall, please.
Trustee Horn? Yes. Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance renaming Sunset East Drive from Sunrise Drive to Cleveland Avenue within the Village of Moni. State of Illinois, and I believe the county has asked us to look at this, and also the public safety agencies. There's some confusion as to for response time. I believe DJ's given a map showing how it will be changed. But what we're asking the board is to rename it to Cleveland Avenue and signage will be posted to date effect.
Can I, Superintendent Crisell, there are some residents that have the old name of Sunrise still, Sunrise Court. That's not changing. So it's only the drive portion of it that's getting renamed. Correct?
Correct.
In the map that I handed out to people, it's only the Sunrise Drive, not in the subdivision part that leads from basically the Highlands Roosevelt where that little merging curve is to the south of Sunrise Court. That will remain the same.
Is there any concern that somebody's gonna put in an address? There's only a handful of businesses right on that area anyhow. They might still have a Sunrise reference or Sunset East or whatever. Is there any concern or how do we accommodate?
There shouldn't be any concern once it's updated through Will County, the GIS. I know there's many different avenues that we can make sure this naming tool goes into effect.
I, my concern is I hate to see somebody in a truck trying to get to a Sunrise and the only way, the only place that existed anymore happens to be in a residential area. Is there any way, and I'm not sure.
The Google map or the Magellan's or something like that. I did talk to our engineer who had, we tried to work on this as part of our road project when we were looking for the detour routes for Ridgeland. When we wanted to try to upload to some of the GPS units that give you real-time tracking. It proved much more difficult to do that because we wanted to be able to upload the drivers that had these devices in their vehicles already with the instant detour route. That was part of a plan that we tried to put together when we tried to deploy that on Ridgeland. It was a harder thing to figure out how to get it done to them and through those avenues. But I believe once this gets uploaded through the proper channels with the Will County 911 and the other thing, that should, as long as those devices are being updated regularly for the drivers that use them, it should take into effect and cover that.
All right, so here's a question. Is it possible with the passing of this ordinance that we can still allow, and I'm asking technically and legally, allow the Sunrise signage to remain for a few years as long as it doesn't fall apart or whatever? Only because that way if a driver sees Sunrise and that's his old address that he's still going to. Because if you change it today or tomorrow, whatever else, there's still gonna be people who are still gonna use their old addresses, even though they shouldn't. 911 is the biggest issue, I understand. I'm just wondering if it's okay to leave the duplicity on there for a while. Like you go to Chicago, they got the audible whatever, silly street names and all that kinda stuff. Is it possible we could leave for a season a duplicity of labeling on there?
We, it's, anything's possible. We can, we can put it Old Sunrise Drive, whatever, however, you know, to make it work, anything's possible.
Larry, what do you suggest on that? Is there, you understand, like, yes, sir, 'cause like you have a car. You don't update the GPS in the car all the time. Actually, typically don't update the car GPS at all, so.
Do we know how many addresses there actually are?
There's two, two addresses and we've, have spoke to the owners and they're in favor.
So they'll need to change their.
There's confusion for them as well.
Yeah.
With that address.
So they'll need to change their business from their website there, letterhead there, everything is two, and they're okay? There's only two?
Yes.
Two on Sunrise Drive.
There's, there's.
There's one on Sunset East.
Drive East.
Sunset Drive East. Property owner, but that is.
Kind of a storage rental.
And next would be in the future, the plan is to continue Cleveland or Sunrise from Moni Manhattan South and to continue it past the industrial park and put a road in and take it down to Industrial Drive is the plan. So this, this will also help with our I-DAT approval. It's known as the Cleveland Hamilton Realigning Project. It's gonna help us legally as well at Grand.
Can we just stop it? Everybody got enough so we can cut some green tape? Based on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance of renaming Sunset East, Sunset Drive to both Cleveland to make that whole stretch clear.
I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Raisik and Horn, any discussion? Recall, please.
Trustee Horn? Yes. Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Order somewhere on there? Yep, thanks.
Twenty fifteen ten?
Nope, ordinance.
Seventeen twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. And the last item I have for the board's consideration, we received notice late last week that Bailey Ridge 431 LLC is selling their development to a company called Exter 258 10 South Religion LLC. I think they bought some property before from us, or from the developer. What they're asking for, like World Kitchens did and High Street, is basically acknowledgement that it's in a TIF, that they're in compliance as far as we know right now and that the new payments in the future, starting this year, the TIF payment will be made for the new buyer and that to Bailey Ridge 431. There is no liability from the village. All they're doing is selling the property to the same company and now this company will be receiving payments starting in the fall of this year.
And just to clarify, this is the building property where Jacobson's currently housed?
I believe so.
Which is just the east of the Dutchland.
Initially Bailey Ridge came in in 2008, so they've been seven years, but I think there's a motion. Jacobson, sorry. I'm sorry, we need a motion authorizing the mayor to execute the stopping order on behalf of Village of Moni.
No, that's not an ordinance resolution, it's just a.
Just a, for a second.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Gonzalez and Gray. Recall, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Gray?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
That's all I have, the honor.
Nothing other old business, I believe. Anything other new business? Open in the public, non-agenda items. One minute, your comments, three minutes, I'm gonna point you, do you name an item, just a few. Any takers? Executive session, I don't believe we have anything for executive session tonight?
No, sir.
Nothing for extra, regarding the executive session and I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Raisik and Horn, recall, it's our time of seven fifty-six. Recall, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.